Trustee Weekly.
Present.
Trustee McAvoy is absent. Trustee Wells.
Here.
Vice President Lawson.
Here.
President Marcus.
Yeah. Thank you. And so, item four reconvened to regular session. Reported on closed session from August ninth, we received update on litigation. And moving on to item five. Welcome everyone to another Redwood City School District Board meeting and welcome all those new staff and already staff that were here to a amazing fabulous school year. We're keeping our fingers crossed and moving on. So again, if those need translation. If you're speaking to the board, the public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues of concerns, whether or not the issues are on the agenda. To address the board, please complete a speaker's card if you're here. And if you are in line, please submit a Google Doc. If you wish to speak to the board on a subject listed on the agenda, you will be called to the podium at the time the item is being considered by the board. If the item is not on the agenda, you will be called to the podium during oral communication. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person per topic unless otherwise noted. Okay, and item six changes to the agenda. Are there any? Changes?
I have one, and that is nine point.
I have one item, it's nine point three, and that was brought to my attention by one of our board members. And so it is being reviewed by our staff and will be brought back at the next meeting.
Any other changes?
Do we want to move the staff recognition up? There's eleven point one, if there's people who are in the audience for. Yeah, no, okay. And never mind.
Okay. It'll be okay.
Yeah. Great, thank you. With that, can I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have any oral communication?
No oral communication.
Thank you. Moving on to item nine, bond program consent items. There are no questions, can I please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Moving on to item ten, bond program action items. Ten point one is approval of final plan review invoice with the Division of State Architect for Garfield Community School.
Are there any questions?
Sounds like a required step to close out the project, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Ten point two, approval of Measure T and Measure S Bond Program Legal Services Agreement with DWK. Any questions?
Questions that we can answer?
Yeah.
This is just a legal agreement specifically for Measure S and Measure T with a do not exceed of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Yeah, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Moving on to item eleven, school and community reports. Eleven point one is recognize staff who have reached a longevity milestone with the district.
So, Ms. Kelly, would you like to report on that?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. So this is a special occasion for the district, of course. We have a variety of employees that are listed here in the board memo who have been working with us for quite some time, whether that be five years, ten, fifteen, et cetera, and five-year increments. And I'm very proud to present this board memo tonight, even though the real fun and celebration is happening at the staff meetings coming back just next week. It's going to be a really great time for the staff to celebrate longevity in our district. But of course, it's important for the board also to note the people listed here and really celebrate along with them. I purposely listed names and sites in case you wanted to send a note or a quick email, but it's really nice to take a moment to recognize longevity milestones in our district for our really hardworking and dedicated staff that chooses, of course, to, they met, they loved, and they continue to work here in our CSD. So, thank you.
Any comments?
Now, to say it's such a nice way to start the, I mean essentially start the board meeting in the new, the new school year, or at least the board school years with the recognition of the staff longevity, you know, families have longevity in the district as well. And so it's just amazing to see just the years of dedication. I'm really looking forward to Monday to be able to see the faces and be able to celebrate with everyone and recognize obviously the longevity, but just everybody that's part of what makes Redwood City School District come. Awesome to see across all categories of work, from both in the classroom, teachers, administrators, the office staff, maintenance, facilities, bus drivers, I mean, across all. Everybody that's working is recognized here. I think almost every site in the district office was represented too, so again, I just, great way to start. Really appreciate all the hard work that everybody does and really want to recognize these nearly a hundred people that have hit their longevity milestone.
Amen.
I was just gonna say that as he's speaking, I want to say, of course, whatever you said, because that's exactly what I was thinking, but you said it like just so well. And again, of course, the five, the ten, I mean, those are have been here for over twenty years. That is awesome, because that shows that they really care for our community and, you know, they're happy here in Redwood City. So, again, thanks to everyone for their passion and their I can't even think of the other word that I was gonna say. Yes, and their commitment. So, thank you, everyone. Okay, and with that, then moving on to eleven point two, Measure T Bond Program Update.
And so this evening, we have an update on Measure T, and I believe Will, you're gonna take this one on, aren't you?
Yeah, I'm gonna share my screen right now.
Alright, perfect.
Right, can you guys see the presentation? Okay, great. So just displaying some of the work we were able to accomplish this summer. Starting with the Adalante Selby steam classroom modernization. So you can see the completed modernized steam classroom with a new furniture package. We are in the process of completing all punch list items at Garfield. As you saw on the agenda tonight, DSA has acknowledged the project as complete and given us a final price to pay to obtain certification. So we're looking forward to that in the near future. We have two punch list items remaining on the entire new construction and mod project. We're completing heat detector access doors this weekend. And then one of the longest lead time material item were these sunshade panels of specialty glass. And we've received two of three shipments. Most of them are going to be installed this weekend. We're still waiting on another shipment. It's going to come later this month. Once we get that, all punch list items will be complete and we'll hopefully obtain DSA certification on the project around the same time that we complete the sunshade panel install. You can see in the back the completed, the completed parking lot and the restored field where we used use the field as a lay down area and parking. Better angle of the completed rear parking lot project and the field restoration. So we've been working, working closely with the city to make sure that the field was properly graded, you know, irrigation in place. Programmed correctly, and we laid the new sod. It's looking great back there. We completed the Henry Ford outdoor classroom this summer. Here's one angle that shows the whiteboard. Some of the benches. Redwood log stools. Another angle back there in the corner are a couple tables and benches. And then another angle of the landscaping and additional benches back behind the pathway. At Henry Ford. Just last week, we completed the in-wall folding table and bench replacement. You can see them folded down to display here. Now, we put the finishing touches on the Kennedy Steam Classroom Modernization, the additional cabinet work and sinks over the summer. The one remaining item is the final furniture package to match the other steam classrooms, which will arrive next week just before the start of school. Over the summer, we completed every last punch list item on the Orion Alternative School of Modernization and New Construction Project. And we have obtained DSA certification, so this project is one hundred percent complete. And then the Taft Field Restoration. You can see one small brown spot in the middle of the field. We're working with our landscape landscape contractor to address that area. I believe we're going to be replacing that small area of sod. We've been having trouble getting it to take right there in the center. And I think next week or the following week, we'll be replacing it. And then the Taft Outdoor Classroom. That was completed over the summer. There's one finishing touch, redwood log benches that will be installed in the empty area between the planters there. And those are set to be installed next week before school starts. That's everything I've got. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. I don't have any questions. Thank you, obviously, for giving us the update. Really appreciate it. It's always a joy to work with RGMK, and I'll go ahead and open it up to see if anyone has any questions or comments.
Looks great. I love always seeing the progress. The sites look wonderful. I think that that's an exciting exciting opportunity for when the kids come back to school this year to see all the improvements that were made over the summer. And yeah, it's, it's always a pleasure getting an update on the bond program.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Moving on to eleven point three. Post issuance presentation of the 2023 General Obligation Bonds Election of 2022 Measure S Series A KNN Public Finance.
Great. We have Blake Bowen with us here this evening to give us an update on, and a presentation, I believe, on the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three bond sales. And so that just occurred right before the end of the school year and give you some more information of where we are at this point in time moving forward.
Exactly.
So Blake, it's all yours. Sure. What? Oh, that's right. We forgot the gong. No, there's a, there's a joke. I'll let Trustee Weekly enlighten you about why we need the gong.
I, I, I was commenting that we needed some way to celebrate passing the starting line on this, and that when the funds landed, we needed to perhaps sound a gong.
Yeah.
Yeah.
New Year's.
Something, yeah. You didn't remind me, or we could have had it here.
Yeah, so while I'm here.
Sorry, Blake, could you turn your microphone on? I think there's a button there like with a person that has on your right, turn on.
It'd be on the right.
Just push.
Maybe it's not.
Okay. Well, as I was saying, while I get to be up here and share some of the highlights from the recent sale, I agree. I think that to the extent a gong or some sort of fun celebratory thing was added. There's a lot of hard work that went into Measure S, as we all know. And the first issuance, which I'll be speaking about tonight, was no short of successes and highlights. And so I'll just share some of those with the board. Welcome questions along the way. Should you guys have any? So on the first slide, or am I looking at you, Rick, to change the slides? Okay. So of the two hundred and ninety-eight million that was approved back in November of twenty twenty-two, the Series A issuance marks the first sale, which was comprised of the first ninety million of bonds that will be directed towards the first phase of authorized Measure S projects. The bond successfully priced on June seventh and closed on June twenty-eighth. There's a table at the bottom right of this, sorry, bottom left of this first slide, which provides some of the financial statistics. One of the most notable highlighted in green with the all-in true interest cost, which is really the aggregate borrowing cost or interest rate of these bonds at four point one six four percent. You may have seen clips or news articles that interest rates have been rising going back to twenty twenty-two. The municipal bond market is, you know, not insulated from, from those rising interest rates. But that being said, with the district's strong credit profile, with the successes that were realized through the Measure T program, this did go quite well. We had a great investor reception, and I think that that helped to minimize the cost of borrowing in an elevated interest rate environment. The bonds will have a final maturity at twenty-nine years out, so marking August one of twenty fifty-two. They were sold as current interest bonds, meaning that there will be principal and interest paid over the life of these bonds. There's no deferral of interest payments or accreted interest is what we call it in the finance industry. So current interest bonds are the most cost effective and most commonly used by school districts in the state of California. And these Series A bonds have a total repayment ratio of one point seven six to one, so quite a bit lower than probably each of us see like in our home repayment mortgages. And again, that does tie back to just the the strong credit profile that the school district carries for its general obligation bond program. In addition to the administrative team that was instrumental in this, my firm, KNN Public Finance, served as municipal advisor. Stiefel served as bond underwriter and DWK served as bond and disclosure counsel. This is the exact same team that started the Measure T program and saw that through, and we're pleased to continue on with the Measure S program. On the next slide, kind of alluded to this already, one of the main highlights from the Series A transaction was we met with Moody's as we do each time. Well, we have to meet with A or multiple rating agencies for the Series A bonds. We met with Moody's investor services. And the outcome of that rating process is really what we wanted to report. The district's rating credit rating was upgraded to double A one, and that places Redwood City School District among, among the top ten percent of K-12 schools across the nation. There's really only one rating criteria higher, which is the coveted triple A. And there's just not very many schools that hold that rating. So, but to secure a double A one, which is what Moody's offered, is definitely a notable feat. Some of the things that they mentioned within their credit rating report, a review of the district is a dynamic Silicon Valley local economy with robust resident income and wealth, strong reserve position with reserves available outside of the general fund, as well as increasing entrenchment into community funded status. And again, because of this rating upgrade and strong rating profile, this helped to reduce the borrowing cost of the Series A bonds by drawing more investors in that were seeking a low risk investment for their long-term position. On the next slide. It really looks at, you know, how KNN, in conjunction with the rest of the financing team, kind of structured the Series A bonds, ensuring kind of a smooth and fluid implementation plan for, for Measure S as a whole. And so just kind of looking at that graph to the bottom left in the dark blue that represents the debt service that was structured for the Series A. So while there's no other Measure S bonds, the full taxing capacity that voters authorize at twenty-four dollars for hundred thousand is available to pay off these bonds until we start layering on subsequent series of Measure S bonds, which will be in years to come. And so in doing so, we're able to pay off large portions of the loan itself upfront. So in the first three years, if you look at the table to the right, we're actually paying off upwards of twenty-four million dollars in the first three years. And again, that's staying within the tax rate that taxpayer or that voters committed to. But it's allowing for a more cost effective financing overall by paying off the loan early. And then we drop down the tax rate thereafter, leaving capacity for the Series B issuance of bonds. And so and it, the Series B follows the same structure and kind of logic that the Series A does, where we're then ramping back up to the twenty-four dollars. And then we drop down after that, leaving room for the final Series C issuance. And then really the last piece of information and part of sharing this is per education code requirements is all of the costs associated with the Series A bond sale, which are reflected here, starting with the underwriter fee or discount for Stiefel, and then on down the list, attorney fees, municipal advisory fee, rating fee, and some of the other ancillary fees that are associated with the sale. So I intended to keep the report pretty short, but if there are any questions, I'm happy to address. And I do want to say just publicly that congratulations, that this was a great start to the Measure S program. And we hope to build on these successes for the subsequent series of bonds as well.
Thank you very much for the update. Are there any questions?
I'll fire with one. Thanks. First of all, thanks Blake for coming in presenting this. Thanks, Rick, for your role in this and Stiefel and DWK for getting this issuance going. The all-in total interest cost sounds really good, given the current interest, you know, environment. It is, right? I mean, that's what you said. If, for some reason, interest rates went back to this, like historically low decades that we had before this decade or so, would we be able to refinance and take advantage of lower interest rates in the future?
We would. Yeah, these bonds are callable at ten years from the issuance, even though there's, there would be an opportunity. If rates get low enough, you could actually refinance in advance of that during advance refunding. It's basically you can refinance early, the funds are held in an escrow, and then as soon as the bonds are callable at the ten-year mark, then they're, they pay off the old bonds and the new bonds are in place. But in any event, yes, there, there will be refinancing opportunities if we see these interest rates get any lower than they are.
Great. Well, the district has a big responsibility to be responsible with taxpayers' money, and it sounds like a wonderful first step. Thanks.
Okay, well, with that, thank you again, very much.
Thank you, Blake.
Should I give you back your microphone, Dr. Baker?
You could, no, because we have some other reports after you. But thank you.
Great. So moving along to item eleven point four, SEPTAR and Special Education Joint Presentation to the Board.
And we have Dr. Maeve Mahalan that will do this presentation, I believe jointly with SEPTAR, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, I'm Dr. Maeve Mahalan. Good evening, Board President Marquez and Board Trustees Superintendent Baker and Assistant Superintendents. I'm so pleased to be here this evening and to be presenting with our SEPTAR collaborators. Before I begin, I want to pause and introduce our new Assistant Director of Special Education, Dr., sorry, I'm getting nervous, Dr. Eddie McLoughlin. And Dr. McLoughlin is also a school psychologist. Welcome to Redwood City School District, Dr. McLoughlin, and also a familiar face. We're so lucky. Jude Neuss moved from Clifford Elementary School Principal to join the Special Education Department as Associate Director. So welcome, and Jude, also pleased you're here. So if you want to turn on our slides, I think Anna's gonna assist with the slideshow this evening. That's fine. While Anna's getting set up, I can give a little overview. So we have, let's see, six slides this evening. We're going to look a little bit at some special education numbers. We're going to check in on special education services. We provide such a range of services that people may not be familiar with. We want to talk about our collaboration with SEPTAR a little bit. And then highlight just some things that are happening in special education that we're very proud of or are very serious about and pleased to share with the board about these things, including pre-K inclusion, professional development, and some growth in the area of curriculum and instruction for our students with IEPs. So I'm gonna pause here and see how we're, how we're going with our slideshow. Thank you.
I'll just take these few seconds to say it's really nice to see you in person. I think I've only ever met you on Zoom before.
It's nice to be here. I often join in on Zoom. I think I have met most of you before. And again, yeah, it's just, it's really, really great to be here. So we could move on to the third slide. Now we're gonna start looking at our numbers. A little overview, we serve about thirteen hundred students right now in special education services, pre-K through eighth grade. So on to the next slide. That means we see children as young as three, just little, little toddlers getting into preschool, getting preschool ready right up until they leave us at the end of eighth grade and move on to high school. We provide services at all of our sites. Though we do have specialized services located at some sites, and I'll give an example. At Hoover Elementary School, we have an extensive supports learning center focused on students who also have medical needs. So we have a high number of nursing staff in that program. Another thing I would say that maybe isn't clear from the numbers is when we have specialized programs, we try and provide those services across the continuum of grade levels. So for example, at Roy Cloud Elementary, you have a specialized learning center, third grade through fifth grade for the last several years, I believe. And we're opening a six through eight this year. So the students there can remain a part of the community that they have belonged to for the last several years. Next slide, please. So some of the services that we provide, and the most common service specialized academic instruction is what we call instruction from an education specialist or the special education teacher. And we have about nine hundred and fifty students receiving those services. Our second most common service is speech services. We have around eight hundred students receiving speech services. And then some less well-known services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, adaptive, adaptive physical education that last year included a horseback riding program, bowling, and ice skating for our most diverse learners and complicated children. If we move on to the next slide, you'll see some other services. Functional vision services, deaf, hard of hearing, nursing services, which I mentioned already, counseling services, and these are little different than counseling services in general education. Their and children are eligible for this level of maybe more intensive counseling services. And of course, transportation services. We work closely with the transportation team here. Next slide, please. So to pause with our SEPTAR collaboration, I started here last year, and one of the first things I remember doing is having Elena and Michelle come in. We had Elena and Michelle come in. We had high tea, we had a tea party. And we sat down and got to know each other. I'm originally from Ireland. I love a cup of tea. My husband baked a cake. And we started this great collaboration. And the collaboration consists of monthly meetings, planning meetings, and then some participation or support of the SEPTAR monthly meetings that they have for the parent community. Based on feedback from SEPTAR, some presentations we're we're going to do in special education services this year include just an introductory presentation like we did last year. So community members and parents can know who the people are, just like meeting meeting for the first time. Parents are looking for question support and more information for their children with IEPs who are going through a transition. So from kinder, pre-K to kinder, and so on and so forth up through high school. Some information about extended school year, we do offer summer services to eligible students. And then we want to, and this came from the parents as well, to highlight our para educators. So one of our meetings last year, we highlighted our teachers. I want to acknowledge we do have one of those wonderful teachers here this evening, Allison Sodal from Roosevelt Elementary. And Allison and her colleagues from across the district presented to parents about their work. And we strongly feel that our para educators are very, very important professionals in our district and excited I'll be working with them this year to get a presentation ready about their work in the classroom and how they support our students. Next slide, please. The highlight of our year last year, Inclusive Schools Week, I'm not going to spend too long on this because our parent panel will share more about this. Except to say that it was really exciting and we want to make it bigger and better. This is our vision for Inclusive Schools Week. We wanted to mention to the board that we are affiliated and we feel a strong connection with SIP, Supporting Inclusive Practices, which is really from the CDE. They provide a lot of technical assistance around inclusive practices. And Kevin Schaefer has a strong connection with our district through Liz Wolf, who invited him to come and speak to all of our staff about diversity and inclusion at the beginning of the year last year. He continues to provide guidance and consultation. And we feel it's important to stay connected with what's happening in the larger community and also to be recognized for our good work through that connection. Next slide, please. So we worked all through last year in collaboration with our Child Development Center Partners. I want to thank Edna Carmona and her team to prepare this year to extend the continuum of services that we could offer our youngest students. These are students age three to five to include placement through their IEP in the General Education CDC classroom. Those classrooms are located at Adelante, Garfield, Roosevelt, and Taft. Thank you to the principals there who are embracing this new way of serving children. It will be a co-teaching model. And and we expect many, many bumps along the way, right? And that's going to be our learning this year. Last year was planning and this year is doing. To support this process, we were very lucky. We applied for and received a grant through the County Office of Education. And they already had this grant and they're kind of adding us on a late add on. They're going to give us significant funding to provide stipends to general ed and special education staff to attend very high level professional development. I've participated in this before around co-teaching and inclusion. We'll also get some adaptive equipment and an inclusion matrix will actually be a way of maybe measuring some of the work we're doing. So we'll complete something at the beginning of the year and then be able to look at it at the end of the year and talk about our progress and see what's happening. But this feels like a real highlight, starting off on Monday, I will be in one of those classrooms for the morning, and I'm really looking forward to it. Monday, next week, the week after next. Okay, next slide, please. Professional development. So we work closely with Educational Services, Liz Wolf, and this year, Anna Herrera, to ensure that we're aligning our work with what's happening in the professional development department and really increasing the rigor of how we specifically in this slide support our para educators. I want to thank Assistant Superintendent Wendy Kelly and Erin Keiko's Director of Human Resources for their problem solving, brainstorming and planning around onboarding para educators and ensuring that when they join our district before they enter the classroom, they have received some very specific training that that can be applied immediately there in the classroom. We continued a plan of training across the instructional year last year, including a whole series on positive behavior supports, Communication 101. Handle with Care is a two part training to support, to teach us how to support students who are very escalated and very emotionally, maybe physically dysregulated. The first day is on verbal de-escalation. The second day is on physical support. We did a fantastic PD on experiencing differences. And if we do it again this year, I'll invite you. Where our para educators, about a hundred people, got an opportunity to go around in groups and have an experience of what would it be like if I was reading this text and I had reading challenges? Maybe I had some form of dyslexia or had auditory processing difference. And they really enjoyed it. It was very interactive. So we'll let you know. And then, of course, self care. And we're we're in this busy and tremendously fulfilling, but also sometimes stressful profession. So let's pause and take care of ourselves. And part of that is to let the power professionals know that we respect them as individuals and as power professionals. Last slide, please. So I kind of preempted my talking about collaboration with educational services. I was really more thinking about this slide and all of the conversations last year around the science reading are also happening in special education land, right? So our district is not like other places I've worked where it's a really siloed system. In our district, we work very seamlessly together. I meet regularly with educational services regularly with Dr. Baker to ensure that the work we're doing in special ed is aligning with the work district wide. So our special education teachers this week attended the CRLP training, the California Literacy and Reading Program Training. And then later in the week, they're going to receive some more specific training on these programs that we believe we want to add to their, not we believe, we know, we want to add to their toolkit to provide to children in maybe a more intensive setting, a smaller group. One is called SIPs, the second for our older children, six, eight, read one eighty and system forty four. And these are two additional tools in the toolkit that we we're kind of excited. They're both data driven, so we will be able to report out on the data attached to rolling out those programs. You may know, once I get started, I actually love talking publicly. So on to what is the last slide. Throughout this presentation, I've been talking a little bit about learning centers. And more traditionally, we might have heard about special day classes. So part of our work last year was I'm looking at the language we use when we're describing services for children and the location of services. And how do we want to make that language feel more inclusive, more welcoming and more dynamic? So that we landed on on this, we also brought this to our SEPTAR parents as well to get their feedback. And we're going, last year, the second half of the year was kind of a testing, let's test the waters with this. But this is the language we're using. And we will reference the former language so that people are familiar. And but we feel the opportunity to be in a learning center by the nature of the term provides for a more dynamic space where I might go to receive services. But where I might also leave to go back into the general education classroom. So that's something about our new, our new language. That's the end of my half of this presentation this evening. Thank you for your time. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Obviously, thank you for the presentation. You do have a question? I'll comment. Okay, go ahead.
First off, thank you so much for the presentation and for all the work that you and your staff do to take care of these students of ours. So bless you. That's amazing. I'm super curious. How does ice skating help students learn? Like, because that came out and I was like, wow, I'm interested to know more. It's it's it was a very small part of the presentation, obviously.
Absolutely, absolutely. So the adaptive physical education program and provide services to students really aligned to the general education, physical education curriculum and how those students, those children can access the physical space and move their bodies through space as any of us would want to in terms of leisure activities and community activities. So that's really what it was about. The APE teacher had written some grants to get some extra grant money to be able to do some of this work. And it's literally like a PE class, but an amazing memory being made through the PE class and an amazing collaboration. So typically, the speech therapist will be involved, occupational therapist, the teachers, the para educators. So we're looking at, for example, communication boards about planning, like where are we going to go this week? We may be taking photos and talking about it, making a story afterwards. And we may have a video for the purpose of purposes of sharing joy that goes out to staff who are familiar with seeing these students, many of them maybe in wheelchairs. Or students who may not have an opportunity to get out to the countryside and see a horse. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm curious about the the delta about how special ed enrollments and these programs have been changing over time. Like, how meaningfully different is this school year versus prior ones? And what kind of macro changes are you expecting to happen in special ed?
Okay, so I would say for this year, our big focus is on reading and the two programs that I mentioned, SIPs and Read 180 System Forty Four, I think they're going to be are we're moving to a space of expectation that I'm saying they're tools, but but also when, when, say, for example, members of cabinet or principals, school teacher leaders are doing walkthroughs and they're in the learning center. This is what I accept, expect to see in the learning center. So really having very clear expectation about what we want our students to be receiving and from special education teachers. And then measuring the data to really look at the efficacy of that. We have a couple of other programs rolling out as well. You may be familiar with Linda Moot Bell, Seeing Stars, and one other one that will roll out later in the year. So that's what I would say in terms of curriculum and instruction. And we also have a social emotional curriculum and a pilot for math curriculum, a touch math curriculum. So we have different bits and pieces going on, but the the basic core of it is curriculum and instruction and raising the bar. The second thing we expect to see this year is tons of professional development and for both our teaching staff and for our para educator staff. So that's kind of another huge focus. It got up and running last year, but I feel it's more concrete this year. And then the third piece, I think in terms of there is a great interest in our parent community around inclusive practices. So we are beginning our preschool inclusion program. We have, we have about at least seventy five percent of our students spend all of their day in general ed. But we have some work to do in terms of our belief systems and our compliance with special education law and our technical skills in order to support diverse learners across settings. So that is starting to be unpacked this year through a series of ten mini presentations to all staff. So we meet with staff regularly in their different cohorts. And I see that as kind of another thing happening this year, but the three areas, curriculum and instruction, professional development, and then inclusive practices.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Anything else?
I don't, I don't think I have any questions. I thank you very much for your presentation. I I'm very excited about all the professional development that you've been talking about, especially for the paras. I think that's so important and something that we've really been lacking. So I'm really excited that we're going to be doing more of that. I'm excited about the new curriculum we've talked about. I am actually a former Linda Moot Bell employee. So I'm a big believer in their programs and seeing stars. I'm a big cheerleader for it. So I love that you're bringing that in. And then you reminded me that in the beginning of the twenty nineteen school year, Joe Lanzion invited me to one of the horseback riding sessions because I'm a former hypotherapy volunteer. And then twenty twenty happened. So I never got to go out there. So I'm gonna have to follow up with them. I don't think they're in the meeting right now, but really excited about those programs that Joe's been doing, and I think it's fantastic. So thank you for supporting the students that way.
Thank you.
I think that's all I had. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation and welcome back to another year at Redwood City School District. And thank you for introducing Eddie and Jude in his new role. And Allison, thanks for being here as well. I'm excited. You know, it is, it is nice. I remember meeting you at a SEPTAR meeting actually last year and hearing about your perspective on inclusive practices. And it's really interesting to see all that work coming through this year and how it how it continues the ongoing relationship with Kevin Schaefer, who I think I heard for the first time at a SEPTAR meeting as well. The and the partnership with the county for the early education inclusive practices. I I'm excited to see what we're able to accomplish this year and how I appreciate hearing your perspective about how things are well integrated at the how how special education is not siloed in Redwood City School District. I thought that was really nice to hear and how you can collaborate well with our Ed Services Department. And across the the different departments in the district to be able to get things done, which I think is really important. And is the only way we can possibly facilitate, you know, having more inclusive practices. So thank you for presenting.
So I had said I didn't have any questions, but I remember that I did. With the reading instruction, I guess my thing would be, obviously, it's the instruction that takes place in the classroom. I'm just wondering how is that addressed to the parents? Like, how are parents able to help their students when they're home based on this SIPs and Read 180 and System Forty Four? Is that something that is shared with the parents so that they can help the teacher out or their student, you know, at the same time?
This is a great question, and I'm not sure I have a specific answer. The SIPs program is very prescriptive in nature and it's a very specific way of doing things. The so I'm going to say I'm going to say that's going to be individual to the student and the parent and the relationship with the teacher in terms of continuing and reading support at home and what that looks like at at home. The SIPs program isn't replicated at home. But the progress certainly sending home readers that are matching how my child is doing would be very appropriate and yeah, meaningful, because now my child will be getting something that they can do. It's very measured in that way. I'm not just sending home a book. And the child's maybe demonstrating frustration at home. The Read 180, I will have to get back to you because it is an online interactive format. So technically, maybe children could be doing it at home. But generally, it's a it's a supervised time in yeah, so I'm not sure if that would be if that would be homework. What will change for those children hopefully is their ability to access the homework and what they're doing. But I will definitely bring your question back to my no, who's our teacher on special assignment and the person who's coordinating a lot of this and follow up with you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you again for your time.
Okay, so moving along to item twelve. That's right. Yeah. But this is to change slides? Okay, great. Do you hear me? Okay. Good evening, Mr. Baker, Dr. Baker, President Marquez, the board members and cabinet members. I'm President of SEPTAR Special Education PT in Redwood City. My name is Elena Livina, and I have SEPTAR Secretary, Michelle Gilardi with me, and our Spanish liaison, Alejandro Sanz de Val. So we're all going to be speaking a little bit. Alejandro will speak in Spanish, so we have English interpretation in place. Okay. So we are very grateful for our collaboration with our Special Education Department and Dr. Dr. Maev Mahalan and her team. And we're gonna just And we're gonna just, we're here to tell a little bit about Septar in case you didn't hear that before. So a little bit overview for today's presentation. We're gonna talk a little bit about partnership with the district, our goals for next year, for this year, advocacy as Septar, as our PTA, our community outreach, and what we would like to to collaborate with the district to support us better. So this is our Board of Directors for Septar. We have lots of parents involved. And we grew from three to seven members this year. We have a teacher liaison, Allison Sandoval with me with us today. I believe we have a couple of people on Zoom supporting us as well. We have people in the audience supporting us today as well. Our our children are aged from preschool until almost high school. Some graduated our district as well. Next slide. So Septar was formed in two thousand and seven as the first district-wide special education PTA in in Redwood City. We are members of California State and National PTA. And our mission is to bring families and educators together to meet the educational needs of students with disabilities in Redwood City. We offer educational workshops and presentations, support disability awareness events, and organize social activities and provide mini grants for teachers. Michelle's gonna talk next.
Hello. So these are some of the topics we covered last year in our meetings. We do all of our meetings on Zoom. I send you an email every month. But what's cool about our presentations is they're a combination of, you know, district presentations, information, and then we bring in speakers from a lot of different places, which we'll talk about in a minute. But Maeve talked about my favorite presentation last year, which was the teacher presentation where they showed their classrooms, talked about their curriculum. It was great. And we have a YouTube page where you can watch it if you want to. We can send you that info later to get to find it. But some of the speakers last year, Sam Drazen, he was our featured speaker for Inclusive Schools Week, which we'll talk about next. But he spoke to students at some of the schools. He presented at our December Association Meeting. He is a wonderful person about to talk about inclusion, as well as Dr. Shelley Moore, who we brought in. She's sort of a nationally known person, again, a strong inclusion advocate. We worked with Parent Venture, Septar, and then also the school district helped bring her to us. The presentation was through Parent Venture. But that was fabulous. That's also something you can see on Parent Venture's website. And I also want to mention Sheridan Nicolau. She is from the State Council on Developmental Disabilities. She gave a great presentation this past year, and she's going to be coming back this year to moderate a panel discussion with self disability self advocates, which is something that we've been really wanting to do. And, you know, they are obviously the people we want to hear from. Inclusive Schools Week, that's something we really wanted to highlight telling you about because that has been one of our greatest collaborations with the district. Because we, as a small PTA, you know, getting the district behind this concept of celebrating all of our children's differences is super important. Our goal this year is to have all the schools participating. We had six schools that were actively participating. Some of the things we did, projects, book reading, like I mentioned before, Sam Drazen spoke at some of the schools. Elena created a calendar of activities and lesson plans for teachers to use in their classroom. We have a virtual reading room. It's on our website. Also, teachers had access to that. It's online books about different people disabilities, about just a really great catalog of books to to look at and read with your students. And obviously, you can look at it home. We had a banner at each school site. The district paid for those. That was wonderful. And you'll see it in the next slide. So this is sort of the highlights, the bottom corner there. Those were the banners that we had up. You might have seen them. The picture, the orange picture that we have Hoover at the top and the center, I think, was from Clifford. The wall of little pictures on the left, I think that was Roosevelt. And then I think maybe Roy Cloud was the superheroes. And then the picture on the far right is Sam talking to students at Roy Cloud. And then that's a little screenshot of our reading room, interactive classroom, Disability Heroes. So we've put in a lot of time on this. And again, we want to make it even bigger this year. We want to try and get all the schools participating. And we have hope, we're trying to get some big activity slash fundraiser for for like a culminating activity. We'll do our best.
Hi, my name is Alejandro Sandoval, and I wanted to say that we have community participation and engagement. We have Septar team meetings and presentations. We also have active community outreach and engagement. All meetings have Spanish interpretation of very good quality that is provided. Spanish-speaking presentations as well on IEP advocacy as well. And all members of the public are invited for these meetings.
Thank you so much. I just want to highlight the Spanish interpretation at all our meetings. And I want to have a say big thank you to the district to sponsor that interpretation because that's a huge part of our belief that we want to involve every voice in the community. And we have a lot of Spanish-speaking families, and we want to include them at the discussion table and really have have them involved in in our discussions about students with disabilities. So next slide. This is a snapshot of our website. We completely redesigned the website, so we provide a lot of resources for parents about IP, about the rights, and some organizations, community organizations. We have a YouTube channel now. We record all our presentations and you can watch it online. We don't have a lot, but we started last year. So please visit our website. And this is a fundraiser we did last year with dinner and a movie. It was very successful. Movie was not about me, and we had a discussion afterwards. And this year, we would like to, like Michelle said, do a bigger and hopefully more successful fundraiser. Our goal is to provide after-school activities for our families. Inclusive after-school activities, because this is not, we don't have a lot of opportunities right now for inclusive after-school programs. When our families want to enroll their kids in after-school program, there's not many choices, almost no choices at all. So we would like to raise funds to provide that for our families. So some of our some of our advertisement is brochures. We we did the brochure, so we can sorry. We also meet monthly at the Magical Beach Playground to build the community and talk to families and outreach to involve more more parents to participate. Our goals for this year is continue close collaboration with the district. The fundraiser that I mentioned, have a bigger Inclusive Schools Week, involve every school in the district. And have a liaison at each school. We would like to have a representation of special education PTA at every single school. Right now, we only have about six schools represented. And we would like to partner with PTOs and PTAs. So our PTA is also doing some advocacy work. We endorsed the resolution on inclusive education for students with cognitive disabilities this year. And it was adopted at the National PTA. Also, some of us are members of Community Advisory Committee, which was, we are representative of this district at the SALPA. And we participate in their legislative events. So last year, we supported Senate Bill eleven thirteen on removing barriers to inclusion in a general education classroom. And the last slide, almost last, is what do we need, what do we need to to collaborate more? Is what we would like to see is a three- to five-year plan for inclusive education implementation. And we would like to see that the district is committed to inclusive education on the long term. We would like to see more inclusion specialists in our schools. Like I think Maeve mentioned, co-teaching model. Some schools are already doing co-teaching models. So we would like to have to see more support for those teachers and for those schools who are already doing the work. Expecting professional development to all grade levels in all teachers and to general education teachers as well. We would like, as a Septar PTA, a seat at the table when when as a district advisory committee, when the decisions are made about special education. And at the end, I include a couple of links on research about inclusive practices and some publications for the last ten years. So and last year we did this footage last year of our students. It's a short video, one minute. There there are about four students in our district. We asked them questions about inclusion, friendship, and belonging. So this is what we who we're doing this work for, and we believe that every student deserves an equity in education. This is the end of our presentation. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you very much. That was actually a lot of information and really good information. So really appreciate the update that you gave us on Septar. There was a lot of things that I didn't know. I had joined some meetings prior years. I know I didn't join any of your meetings last year. So it's really good for us to hear what you guys do as a PTA. And then when you talk about you want the district's support, we do support special ed. And so I would assume that you guys would talk to Maeve so that she could then talk to Dr. Baker or Cabinet, and then that would give us the information on the board because for sure, all kids should be part of the Redwood City School District regardless of whether they're in special ed or not. So I do want to tell you as a parent myself that we do support special education. So thank you again very much for the presentation. And then I wanted to ask, when you talk about you only have six schools participation, is that because you have not reached out to what you try to reach out, but not a lot of parents are joining? Are you only getting? Because again, going back to the times when I went to some of the Septar meetings, and this were all in person. There was not a lot of people. I want to say it was probably eight, ten of us. And I don't know what schools were represented. This is way back. So again, that's the other thing, too. I'm big on communication. So and I know that our Redwood City communication person is good, but I don't know, since it's another party, how that information could can get distributed to the parents, but for sure, so that we can reach out to them so that they know what these meetings are about, even with those presentations. A lot of the times it's good to hear that you have the Spanish interpretation so that the Spanish-speaking parents don't feel left out as well. And I love the fact that you said that you have a website where you're actually recording your meetings. And I'm also wondering, I guess it's a question, too, is do parents know that this is happening? Because maybe parents didn't attend, and now they don't know that it's up there, and maybe they can actually see it. So that would be my my, those are my comments and questions for you.
So we send emails to every principal in this in the school district to put flyers when we have upcoming meetings. And some principals are very responsive and they do it, and some principals don't really respond to our emails. So I'm not, and we also send everything to Maeve. So there's meetings going on every month. And every month, we send those emails, and sometimes, you know, hit or miss. So we try to reach out. Well, we do robocalls. So yeah, every meeting, we we record a robocall, Spanish and English. And every parent who has a child with special education needs get those calls. But we would like to involve everyone, not just the parents who have a child with disabilities. We want everyone, you know, the whole community support each other. This is our goal.
Great, thank you. Are there any more questions?
I just want to say thank you for all the work that you do, all the parent volunteers here. It's it's incredibly hard work being a parent of a special needs child, a neurodivergent child. And I I know how much work goes into that. And so your extra volunteer hours on top of that is to be commended. And I think you sell yourself a little short. You didn't say anything about, I don't think anything like this exists outside of Redwood City, certainly not in Seminole County. So I think that the work that you guys do as special ed PTA is significant. And thank you for carrying that on. Missing Leslie Stafford, she's not in our meeting now that she's moved out of the high school. But you know, she's been the face of SEPTAR for a very long time. And I'm just really happy to see that you guys are carrying that on, that work that, that she'd been doing too. I had one question on the brochure that you have. Where, how is that getting out to families? Is it printed, I guess is the question. Like, is it in offices?
Yeah, it's, it's in a special education office, the district office. We, we just printed a new copy, updated copy for this year. And I hope it's going to be included in every IP packet, like for, for all the parents. This is our goal, to have the brochure with the packet of, you know, when the parents have an IP.
I would just suggest too, there's other places to post it, like the library has community boards that you can just pin it up to. And like Starbucks has community boards. So you might want to look at some of that just to kind of reach out to the greater community too. That's definitely somewhere to, to put some free advertising.
Yeah. But thank you for saying that. We only, we, we actually not the only one. Redwood Shores also has a special ed PTA. They're opening doors is, but Palo Alto doesn't really have. So Palo Alto come to our meetings. So like in San Mateo, sometimes come to our meeting. And they, they say that they're very informative in meetings. And yeah.
I'll just add, thank you for the presentation, Elena and Michelle and Alejandrina for coming tonight and sharing what SEPTAR has been doing. I look forward to, you know, being invited to your meetings as you always do, coming to school year and making it to a couple, hopefully, as I try to each year. So, but thank you again for the volunteer work. As, as Janet said, you know, this is all volunteer work. It's all for the, in service of the students at Redwood City School District. And, and really what benefits some of the kids benefits all of the kids. And so really appreciate the time and effort that you put into it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I hope to see you at our meetings.
So Elena, I have a question. Maybe it, it's more of a comment. To get the word out, you know, how I put out the superintendent's newsletter, at least once a month. It's just my newsletter. So if I could get your information, I'll do, I'm going to pull from your slide deck, but also when you want to involve more people in your meetings, we can also through our communications department, push that out. So you're asking for not only parents who have special needs students, but you're also asking more of a community to come to these meetings. So if you could get me that information or horde, we will do kind of a, a blast for you through the district communications department. And then I can do on a monthly newsletter that I sent out, whatever is taking place in SEPTAR. So it gets out to the whole community too.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, item 12, discussion of school assignments and committee assignments for board members for the 23-24 school year.
Okay, so as you know, Alisa is attending as an attendee this evening. I had debated whether we should do this tonight or wait until we have Alisa here in case she wants to give her input and, or if she would like to change an assignment in regard to any of the committee work. So you know, I, I could have her publicly comment, I guess. We can't do a back and forth. So, so I am thinking if you don't mind, and I had forgotten about this item and I didn't mark it on my sheet, that maybe we could wait until she's back, if you don't mind, because sometimes you do switch.
Yeah, I think that, that makes sense. Okay, perfect.
Okay, so with that said, and moving on to item 13, consent items. If there are no questions, can I please get a motion to approve?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Action items, 14.1, adoption of resolution number one, approval of education code options for teaching assignments.
That is Miss Kelly. I'll turn that over to her.
Thank you. So each year, as we did in June and then also in August, certainly prior to the start of the school year, there is a slight need just for a handful of folks here on the, on the list. There are about seven or eight teachers that are fully credential teachers by the state of California. But there is a need for them to teach a course outside their credential. So they have all of the strategies and education and practices in place for a credential teacher. And the required units, university units and post bachelor work to support the content knowledge. And so it is our recommendation that the board approve the request for ed code option waivers for these teachers for the 23-24 school year. Are there any questions?
No questions, but I'm glad that the, you know, you have staff that's flexible and willing to be able to, you know, to teach the proposed assignments so that you know, these classes can have stability throughout the school year, which is, I think, the, you know, a top priority.
Okay, with that, if there are any more, if there are no more questions or comments, can I please get a motion to approve resolution number?
I'll move to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. 14.2, adoption of resolution number two, approval of teachers gaining tenure status.
So, yes, thank you. So this is another celebratory item, quite remarkable. We have teachers who have shown the capacity and the proficiency within their craft of teaching in their content areas and with their students over the course of at least two years by completing two, the administrators would complete two evaluations where it's an observation formally each year, so a total of four formal observations. And then of course, many, many informal observations over time. These are teachers that are either new to the profession and started with us as their first job or transferred to our district over time and have completed this two-year time period with quite success. And so I'm proud to recommend for tenure, these individuals who will be publicly acknowledged and celebrated next week at their August staff meeting with their colleagues and so forth, at their site administrators, who will pass along the well wishes. So just, I wanted to give this information to the board tonight and seek your approval for this tenure status for these individuals.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations. So I think it's like 25, right, that are in there. Hopefully, many of them, we'd already congratulated at the induction program. I'm not sure. I didn't, wasn't, didn't look through the names, but I imagine that many of them were. And I just want to thank them. I'm sure they're not here listening. So maybe you can pass along, but for choosing Redwood City School District as, as the place where they really want to make, you know, keep, continue on with their teaching professional career and really making a difference in students' lives. With that, I'll move to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. 14.3, adoption of resolution number three, sufficiency of instructional materials.
This comes before you, before you every school year, right before school starts to indicate that we do have sufficient materials that supplies, books for all our students within the district, whether that be for our special needs students, our multilingual learners. And then we also have the Williams Audit that comes later on and comes and reviews a couple of school sites to make sure that, you know, we're not just having this information put forth to you and you're approving it, but that we're actually doing it.
Thank you. And without other questions, comment?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to item 15, board and superintendent report.
I don't have anything to report from the summer. I missed our bond meeting last week, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we just had a quick bond team meeting to bring us up to date for this meeting today, so.
Great. Dr. Baker?
Yes, it's great that people are back. We have our principals back that have been back over a week. They started a week ago Monday. And we had professional development with them on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday all day, which we will at a future board meeting be giving you an overview of what that was. The teachers at this point in time, some of our teachers started back yesterday for trainings, also with, in the area of reading with the California Literature Reading Project. And then we also have trainings going on this week in regards to mathematics for our elementary school teachers, our K5. And we also have training for our teachers in the 6-8 under UDL, Universal Design Learning. So a lot is happening and so everything is buzzing and moving along. Looking forward to the 14th, which is Monday, because we have not done this in three years. And so it's kind of going to be a show that it's going to be great for you to really, and as we meet as, you know, board members, you meet with myself, I give you a little overview of what's happening. And I've met with Cecilia Sefar and also with Alisa and Mike. And hopefully Janet and David tomorrow, and we'll go over that piece. But you'll get to see some faces of new people, a lot of new people that are in administration. And we're going to be acknowledging a lot of the great work that's been going on in Redwood City, even though we were in those dark days of COVID. So really looking forward to Monday. Like I said, we used to do this annually. And then we stopped for three years, of course, we couldn't. But I'm hoping that you can be there. And I know Janet, you're, there's a little timing issue. So I understand that. But hopefully you'll be able to join us starting Monday, eight fifteen, eight fifteen. It's all at McKinley.
And which, which part of McKinley? Because I'll definitely be able to stop there for the end.
It'll be certificated.
The front, okay.
And then it'll be classified.
On the front lawn?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. Really looking forward to it. I think we all are. Almost, but then I got cold feet because I started about, about these. I know, yeah. All right, that's it for me.
That's great. So moving on to informational items. 16.1 Quarterly Williams Report, fourth quarter for April 2023 through June of 2023.
Any questions for Rick?
Okay.
Oh, that's right. It's my report. I was going to give it to you anyway.
Okay, so if there are no questions, moving on to 16.2, information on Sematow County Investment Fund.
That's you. That's the one. I got ahead of myself.
Positive, that's what we're concerned.
Yeah.
Great. With that said, moving on to 17, correspondence.
I did receive in, I, I did receive an email from a parent with some extenuating circumstances concerning her child's admission to the MI strand of middle school. And that was addressed. And Dr. Baker is in the middle of dealing with that situation.
I have not come to, I'm still looking into it and working with the principal.
We all received an email from a community member about our closed session today.
Okay, great. Thank you. Moving on to item 18, other business suggested items for future agenda. Okay, moving on to 19, board meeting calendar. Are there any changes? No. Okay, so with that, moving on to 20, a German, it is now a 25th. Does somebody want?
Move to a drink. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.